This goes on to the second reading though, correct?
Mayor, we would ask, we do an emergency.
Okay, we're not like the other ones we just did.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I have a motion to approve ordinance 21-20 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 21-30.
Resolution number 21-30, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is the third phase. Pete, you can go to the next one. This is the third phase of the annual budget process again. You recall, the first phase was the tax budget. The county budget commission reviewed our request for the supplemental for the 2022 budget and realized that we needed all the money that the levies provide, which is really what that step is all about. And based on that, they've given us the preliminary tax rates and amounts for 2021 payable in 2022. It's interesting to note, normally I have the total property values of the city. This year, there's been a lot of review of those and appeals of those numbers with the big increase that we got with the reappraisal year. And those are still going underway. We actually got two today on some property that we bought that they reassessed the property values and actually increased our property tax liability for a couple of them. When we buy property, we normally have to pay the property taxes for this year, and then they go tax exempt after that. But so even today, we're still receiving adjustments for those that are going out to the residents and businesses. So but the bottom line is that even though you could see that the property values went up, the revenue that they're projecting for the levies in this legislation only show a 2% increase from this year, which goes to show you how on fixed levies, even though the appraised values go up and the values go up, we're on a fixed rate levy. So again, ours aren't even matching inflation at this point. But I just wanted to point that out, that again, a lot of people think that there's a direct relationship between the property values and the amount of revenue that we collect, and that's just not true with those fixed levies. The inside millage does go up with those values, but all of our other levies, the 17 mills, it doesn't really affect that. All we get is the benefit of new growth and construction. So so the bottom line is, is that after they get done with the appeals and they'll finalize the numbers about November, December, so we'll be back with their final version of what those levies will generate. But they never usually change from one step to the other. And then the county auditor will ask us to certify those amounts again. So and just to let you know, as far as the budget process goes, we've already projected out the ending fund balances. Right now, the directors are going through all of their budgets for 2022. They'll be submitting those, and then the first week of October, we'll sit down and go over those to provide you with a responsible budget for your consideration in the meetings that we have in November. And then again, the final step is the adoption of the budget and the appropriation ordinance, and that's in our December 13th meeting. So so really, what this does is recommends approval of the preliminary numbers that they've indicated that will be generated from our levies, which were the exact same ones that we had when we passed this back in July. So but we have to go through this formal step for the ORC. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any? If not, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 21-30.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Liquor permits. First, Chief?
Good evening once again. I do have two this evening. The first one is a stockholder change within the business. The Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of a request regarding a stockholder change regarding a D2, D2X, and D6 liquor permit for 2M2S LLC that we're doing business as Beaver Valley Wine and Spirits located at 3325 CGA Drive here in the city. Our record checks were completed and sent to the Ohio Department of Commerce and the Division of Liquor Control, and we conducted all that without any issue, and we're recommending this application move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, Chief?
The next one is basically a transfer of liquor permit from the Primanti Corporation doing business as Primanti Brothers that's located at 2430 North Fairfield Road, and it is moving to the name of Roosters Beaver Creek Incorporated at that same exact location. Again, the records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control were conducted on those applicants and the shareholders for this application. And again, no issues, and we're recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is council time. How we start over with Councilmember Curran?
What a great, great weekend this has been. Certainly having the privilege, as many of you who were there, to be a part of the great 9/11 service. And by the way, the Daily News really gave us pictorially a lot more exposure than other particular jurisdictions, and I think it was just wonderful, well attended, great commentary. It was just wonderful to be a part of that. And then secondly, I guess, would be popcorn, being part of the popcorn festival and talking to all the people. It was just real great. That'd be a couple of comments, Your Honor.
Very good. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. From our last meeting, or since our last meeting, we, I think most of us attended the fire department dedication. That ceremony was just outstanding. Their facility there is just fabulous. We went on a tour and got to see all of the new things there, and so that was really, really an outstanding project and looking forward to the other department that's going to bring, or the other station that's in the process of being developed as well. The next thing is tomorrow is our Kiwanis Open House, so for anyone that may be interested in joining Beaver Creek Kiwanis, we will have our open house at 5:30, and it will be at Lefino Plaza. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So my plans to attend council meeting on August 9th were thwarted by my daughter arriving three days early, so thank you for the excused absences while I've been recovering from surgery. However, I was able to attend MVRPC on August 5th, and just a brief update from that is some of the regional bike waste plans. So Miami Valley, Ohio, has the largest paved trail network in the nation. I know, I believe Governor DeWine mentioned this earlier about the, you know, the bike paths that we have here in Ohio. MVRPC's active transportation plan will expand the scope to biking, walking, and transit access, and the plan is going to seek to incorporate pedestrian and bike projects in local jurisdictions, and they're going to reach out to us to see how this plan can work with our community, including public meetings in each county. And we're very proud of the bike paths that we have here in Beaver Creek, so we're excited to have this bikeway plan come into place. The planning for this is going to begin, or did begin in July of this year, and is expected to last for one year. So very exciting things for bikeways coming out of MVRPC and grateful for the continued involvement and cooperation with the organization. A huge thank you to Councilmember Bales for attending the most recent MVRPC meeting while I was on leave, and again, congratulations to the township on their new fire department. My son very graciously tested out the recliners. They work very well for the firemen, so hopefully it's a nice place where they can relax and enjoy in their spare moments if they have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd simply like to echo the comments made by my fellow council members today. Big congratulations to Beaver Creek Township Fire Department, opening of number 65, and to thank everyone for joining the community for the popcorn festival. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, and it was my pleasure to attend MVRPC in your stead, of course. At their last regular board of directors meeting, aside from doing the regular business of amending all their transportation plans, they gave an update on their age-friendly livable communities initiative. This is an initiative they're working on regionwide about how people are aging in their communities and some of the initiatives that they have embarked upon to make our communities more livable for those folks who are getting older. I found it very interesting because they presented some statistics, and one of them was by 2035, people over 65 will outnumber children under 18 for the first time in history. So, you know, we are getting older as a community. Their initiative assesses community policies and programs and infrastructure and gives a score to each community to ensure livability for people of all ages. So very interesting, and there are some things that obviously we could do in Beaver Creek to continue to improve on our score and so forth. They also did talk about some preliminary census data that showed Beaver Creek grew by 3% in the last decade to a total population of 46,549, although those numbers are still generally preliminary. They also showed Beaver Creek Township grew 44.8% in the last decade, which obviously impacts our community as well. A few other comments I wanted to make was just really a big shout out to the Parks and Public Service Department for their fantastic involvement in the 9/11 ceremony and their role in the Beaver Creek Popcorn Festival. It was fantastic. But I also wanted to say that I've gotten some email notifications from the Parks Department about a lot of their programming that they offer, and my daughter decided to take part in a taekwondo class at Lefino Plaza, and she loves it, and it's really cost affordable. And so anyway, I would just suggest that those of you who are interested in the recreation programs, get on that email list because they send me things every week or two. I appreciate it. And I did read that the barn at Wardenza Park is beginning its reconstruction, and fishing derby week is coming up September 19th through the 26th. And finally, I wanted to say that there was a lot of army worm damage at the golf course, but it has started to grow back. So the turf is looking a little bit better now.
Very good.
Yeah, it's good.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, I seem to be aging in place. It's been a busy couple of weeks. First of all, the fire department, 75th anniversary, that was a really good activity to go to. I was able to go to the dinner at CCN too, and that was kind of fun, listening to some of the old firefighters tell some of their war stories. It's kind of like being around the police department, listening to some of those old war stories, but it was good. I was also invited to be a part of the 25th anniversary celebration for Groomingdale's on Dayton Xenia. That's quite an accomplishment in today's world, especially by a female-owned business. Amy Howard's done an outstanding job there. I was also honored to be asked to be a guest along with Mayor Stone and Councilwoman Bales at the flag retirement that the Girl Scouts put on at Angels Pass. For those of you that don't know what Angels Pass is, that's a park that commemorates the loss of eight Girl Scouts and two leaders back in 1959. But the girls did an outstanding job. They were all young ones. But it was kind of interesting that the high school band, it was all girls that were there, and they were all Girl Scouts. So that was impressive. I was able to attend the open house for the Green County juvenile court along with Chief Fiorita and some of his command staff. There's a lot of other county officials there. They've got a really good program out there for intervention and assessment and things like that, that I asked the young lady what her recidivism rate with the people that go through that was, and said 74% of them never come back, which is very, very good. Again, as several people have said, the September 11th 20-year anniversary, I want to make commend Officer Chris Williams from the Police Department for all the work he did on that. He put a lot of work together, got a lot of city, township, county officials to provide a very moving experience, and the C-17 flying over just at the right time with the National Anthem was really great. Again, the popcorn festival is mentioned. I think it was probably one of the better ones that I remember. Weather was perfect. But I do want, on a personal note, I want to thank the COPPs for doing an outstanding job out there directing traffic on North Fairfield and up on Beaver View there. They got the people around and out of there. They, it's not an easy task, and it's a thankless task because I can tell you, I've done that myself, and people are not always the friendliest when you're trying to direct traffic. You're actually trying to help them, but they don't care. And just a reminder that Sunday, September 26th, there'll be a 1K, 5K, 10K run, roll, walk to benefit Owens Place at Rotary Park. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you can, as you've heard, it's been an exciting couple of weeks. I mean, there's a lot going on. Again, I really do want to commend all the work that went into the September 11th memorial celebration. Chris Williams did seem to take the lead, from what I'm told, and witnessed, and he did an excellent job. The police and fire departments did a fantastic job. And we do want to thank the 445th airlift wing out of Wright-Patterson Air Force Base for providing the flyover, that C-17. Now, I will, I'm smiling, I know, because it was a little bit of a touch and go here as we're trying to time that out, with Pete standing over there and giving me signals and Katie in the back doing different things to make sure. And they did have somebody on the ground at our site to, that was in communications with the plane. But it all worked out so wonderfully, and so thank everybody that was involved, not just the people that I happened to mention, but everyone else that was there. We had the color guard, we had from ROTC at high school. We had a young lady do the anthem. We had a gentleman do a, another gentleman do a song. It just went on and on, so it was great. One thing that hasn't been mentioned, because Pete and I attended, it was the Greater Dayton Mayor's and Managers Association had their, we are back to a live meeting now for the first time. And so it's been one of those easy presidencies to, when I had to run meetings because we just didn't have many of them. But everything, everybody was excited to get back together again last week, and so that's going well. That was hosted, by the way, at the Holiday Inn in Fairborn, and Fairborn City was our host. As you may recall, next week, I'll be headed to Washington DC for the DDC fly-in, and the mayor of Fairborn and I will be driving there instead of waiting in line at the airport. And with that said, I'm going to turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, myself too. I'd like to thank both the fire and FOP unions for helping coordinate. That's something that actually Mayor Stone had asked several years back, that we want something every year there, even if it's five minutes, but we definitely want like every five years, you know, want something larger. Well, this was powerful for 20.
Right there.
That was for a 20-year, not celebration, memorial.
Right.
That was quite outstanding. I did want to also, besides the 445th, thank Eric Henry from the county who helped put us in touch with the Forte Flyover, as well as our communications manager, Katie, for really helping us out. She also helped the unions out on getting, organizing some things. Sometimes the guys, I don't mean to be chauvinistic against the guys, but sometimes the guys aren't as organized, and so she really helped do that and of course, and helped promote it. It was a sight to see for anybody there. The person from Wright-Patt was next to me with his walkie-talkie, communicating directly with the plane, I believe, with my phone, with the countdown basically on it with the time, and it was kind of, it worked out, let's just say it worked out fine, because at the beginning, we had so much time allotted for the color guard and mayor, and they got done with theirs, and it's like, okay, stall. We had to wait. But as Mayor said, I think it built a
Anticipation.
Anticipation of almost, and so when the singer, she let it rip, it was great, fantastic, and she got to the end, and there came that plane. So that was our first experience of coordinating such an event, so hats off to all involved, and thank you for the participation. We had, the video of the 9/11 memorial service is on YouTube. It is on social media now, so check it out. Thanks to Katie and some help of a photographer, a video photographer. We got it recorded, and it's a nice, nice thing to actually, to remember the 20th anniversary. Also, I did want to thank for the popcorn festival, you know, with the pandemic that we're in, we struggled Friday with some things, and we had to have some public service people step up to help make, you know, the closing of the road, the barricades and everything else. So thank you to public service staff and park staff for really stepping up and making that happen to us, the general public. They had no idea what was going on with personnel, but staff still made it happen, and thank you. Mike was on the phone with me late Friday night, letting me know what was going on because it just happened, and it's like, wow. So thank you to staff and to the police also. COPP, big thanks to them, and so we can't do it without our volunteers, for sure. So moving on beyond that, just a couple road updates. County Line Road, you know, this is happening. This is Kettering's taking this lead, but this was one of the joint projects, a joint applications on funding, and this is coming, is coming along quick. The current thing is that at the intersection of Tonawanda, we'll be installing a temporary traffic signal, which is important to those in Tonawanda because that is hard to get out, and that's why that existed many years ago. That was put in as a request. It's planned to be activated by the end of this week, so they will be glad to be able to get past the barrels after that. Over the next month, a contractor will be working on completing the remaining curb along the east side of the road, as well as sidewalk and driver approaches, and it's anticipated that the majority of the work along the east side of the roadway will be completed before winter. So that's nice of Kettering to finish our side first. So the completion of this project is anticipated to be summer of 2022. Research Boulevard, this is kind of, it's happening with the median repair. You see new median concrete where those were just falling apart, so the new concrete work has been done there. We're going to start milling operations late September, early October. The installation of the sanitary sewer also is crossing Research Boulevard, planned to begin this week, and traffic restrictions will, should be expected. Now, this is due to the new GE developments, so it's going to be crossing the road. One reason also that the repaving of 835 is a little delayed is also because of GE, because we're going to cut into the median and access point. So, you know, we want to be responsible. We don't want to put down brand-new pavement and then a month later tear it up. So it's worth a delay. We'll still hope to get everything done this year. Indian Ripple, if anybody's been through there, it's the orange barrel fiasco, a lot of orange barrel. I go through there in my truck, and I think I'm going to hit both sides with my mirror. It's a little tight. My big truck makes it through, and most, most people can do it. But the contractor's planning to begin the curb installation along the south side next week, and this work will allow the installation of sidewalk and driver approaches to follow shortly thereafter. And is on pace to complete the milling and resurfacing work late October, early November timeframe, and so we hope to be completed with this project in November. So again, get it done for this year. Hopefully before we start snowplowing. And as mentioned by Councilmember Bales, I believe, mentioned this, Tobias Zimmer Barn, we are very pleased to continue, well, to begin the process. First, we have to tear down the back part that's still standing. I think we call it the lean-to, and part of the bid process was to remove the concrete too, so that it could be sure that the new barn goes on a sure footing. So the groundbreaking with all that demolition, there's not going to be a whole lot of building or anything this year. We hope to get all the demolition done, but the groundbreaking ceremony, we tentatively will schedule for March of 2022, weather permitting, and we hope to be done with it by summer of 2022. A lot of people are very excited about the barn, the historical society, people that this means something to very much. It's very, you hear excitement out there, and so we're very pleased. I just, you know, quite frankly, you know, this was destroyed in the Memorial Day tornado back in 19. What's taken so long? And anybody that went through the tornado in 19, we can clearly say insurance, okay? And the worth of it, and how much it's going to cost to build and stuff like that. So sorry for the delay, but also part of that too was a citizen survey that we did to see, make sure what the residents really did want back. Did they want us to build a barn back? Did they want us to build something else back? And what were our options? And if we built something else back by the barn, we were only going to get a cash value from the insurance that was very little comparatively to the rebuilding cost. So there was a lot of factors, but clearly overwhelmingly, they wanted the historic barn put back. So we heard, and we're moving forward, so very exciting day. And the fishing that was mentioned, Lefino Park, between September 19th and 26th, this worked so well last year, that's why we brought it back. Used to, the fishing derby was one day, one day only. You go out, that was the contest. And now, last year, we had so many people come, way more than we ever did in one day. And so I think this is the new way we'll probably be doing it, whether in the future after COVID, after all this, that we maybe do a highlight of one day or something, but it's still a week long. I think that's the way it's going to be. So send a photo of your child and, and the fish they caught by September 27th for additional visit, the parks and rec, at beaver creekohio.gov, and look for more of it, information on our social media.
So a lot of our citizens got hooked on it, right?
Yeah, got hooked on it. They did. They did. A lot of the kids, they loved it. We did stock the fish, I will say that. We stocked it, but you're not going to catch a whale out of what we stocked it with, plain and simple. Sorry, there is a cost limit. The bigger the fish you're going to put in there, the more it costs for that, but there is some fresh fish for them to catch. And the senior center, hey, National Fall Prevention Month, this is always vital for any elderly because when you fall and there's something broken, the recovery is so long, and you hear such horror stories that that really was a bad turning point from a fall. And so Beaver Creek Senior Center is partnering with Ohio Department of Aging for its 10 Million Steps to Prevent Fall campaign, and to help the senior center increase awareness by putting on your walking shoes and joining the September, on September 24th, 10:30 AM at 5th Third Gateway Park, and that's off of Dayton Xenia Road. That's down there by the cemetery right before, across from Stedman Lane before you get to where 35 is. So please help the senior center with that, and that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. All right, at this point in the agenda, it's citizen comment. Is there anyone present that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come forward, and we hope you can contain yourself to within three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city manager, the chief of police, and of course, our elected officials. First of all, you need to be commended. This is a good time to be a citizen and a resident of Beaver Creek. For all the leadership and all the events and the activities that you have professionally put on for the city of Beaver Creek have been no less than outstanding. And my wife and I have been active in participating and attending those activities, and we know all the coordination, the negotiation, and the communications that go behind, of working behind the scenes to make them top-notch. So you, each and every one of you, as long as your staff and the leadership needs to be commended, and you owe yourselves a pat on the back. So thank you very much for that. This evening, the city manager presented me with a letter today, appointing me to the city of Beaver Creek's Records Commission. I am honored that the leadership would select me and identify me as a volunteer for this position to help manage and perform the appropriate destruction of official records for the city of Beaver Creek. I will uphold the integrity of that office and perform my duties to the best of my ability for the for the leadership and for the city of Beaver Creek and its citizens. Thank you for entrusting me to fulfill this position as a volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you walk away, one is, we'll lift the three minutes, as long as you're going to compliment us. But for the record, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, sir. Walter Chin, 328 Cottonwood Place here in Beaver Creek.
Thank you, Walter. Thank you very much. Thanks for what you do for the community.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chin, and it's, it is volunteers like Mr. Chin and his wife and many others that make Beaver Creek happen. It didn't take long. We're in a, you know, staff meeting, and we, you know, this position is open and needed, and I go around the room, anybody have ideas? And names just came flying, and, and their, his name came to the top, and they're just great residents that care and are willing to jump in, and that's what makes Beaver Creek different than any other community. So thank you, Mr. Chin. I have time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address council? Seeing none, we will move on. The next item is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
I think I got a couple of them, so we'll only vote once, so we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Pick who you want, maybe about five of them.
Motion to adjourn.
If your name comes up the second, third, or fourth.
Make sure you swear him in.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. You can do it right before the meeting.
Okay.
There's a meeting next Tuesday, right?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
Yeah, if you'd like to move to next Tuesday, that is fine with me.